You've got to move it, move it.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, in whose liberty and justice for all.
I can start tonight. So things are wrapping up in the third marking period, which means that then it becomes the incredible speed dash to the end. We were just putting together the secretaries and myself today, all of the different end of the year things to keep in mind that we can send out to staff and things. It becomes a little bit of a logistical challenge, but that's also really exciting because some really special events happen towards the end of the year. But it's really kind of wild to think that we are already at this point in the school year with that. And other things that we've been working on, Mrs. Hawxworth and Mrs. Creed, both attended the SAP Conference, which is Students Assistance Program. They attended that in State College a couple of weeks ago, gained some really valuable information and resources regarding, you know, students' mental health, drug and alcohol, a lot of different resources. We met together today as a SAP team just to discuss and have a sharing out of those resources. And then we're looking at different things that we can put in and enhance, you know, the SAP program with, again, some additional resources that we hadn't had previously know about that are in the semi-local area that we can also tap into in terms of parent programs and things like that that we're very excited about. We also are at the point where the Power School Scheduling Portal has closed. So far this year, it has been really great. The junior meetings, the counselors continue, have met, except for just a couple of kids that were out that they haven't been able to schedule with, but we did all of the junior meetings. We have, I think, all but about 12 requests in from students, which I can tell you that, you know, since we weren't able to start it last year until much, much later, it is wonderful to be at that point when the scheduling process already. And again, just a lot of things, you know, as we look forward to the end of the year. One note, our choral concert did change. Instead of being April 12th, it has changed to April 11th. That notification just went out today. There's actually a track meet that night, which would take a very large portion of the choral members to that. So we worked today to find an alternate date. So just so you have that piece of information as well.
This week, the Outdoor Club went to White Deer Creek. They were stocking trout in conjunction with PA Game Commission. So there was 13 students. Mr. Dutwiler, Mr. Bender, Mr. Curry, they were able to go to White Deer Creek. The work wasn't easy. It was also rainy, so they certainly were going to be wet within the creek, but they had to move basically buckets of fish in preparation for the upcoming trout season. So their work with the game commission for transporting from the fisheries to the creek happened there today. Additionally, with some clubs, Mr. Cook and the Chess Club, they've been gathering during club time, and they've also began competing after school time as well. So they've been competing in like online local competitions. There's been strong interest this year, so students have been participating in study halls and club time and other free time that they have. So it's become a good social component for some of our students within school. This week or next week, the daily item is looking at doing one of the class acts for the chess club and with Mr. Cook there to interview, take some pictures about their interests within chess. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe they are undefeated in all of their matches up to this point this year. So lastly, National Honor Society induction ceremony was held on Tuesday this week. There were 33 inductees, four from the class of 2023 and 29 students from the class of 2024. With the National Honor Society, they submitted their applications and they fell within the requirements of the four pillars. Their demonstration of their hard work within the classroom and outside of the classroom certainly needs to be recognized for all of their efforts that they have put forth. I want to recognize Ms. Jennifer Sands as the National Honor Society advisor. She planned a wonderful ceremony on Tuesday. Also want to thank a couple of students who are within National Honor Society already with helping have the ceremony go off very nicely with some of the components that they had as well. And lastly, I just want to thank Judge Rao for speaking during the ceremony as we inducted these new members.
So at the middle school this week, the community health branch of Evangelical Community Hospital sent representatives over to teach our eighth grade health and PE students hands-only CPR, which was a very cool experience for the kids. They stayed for seventh grade to work with the seventh graders on stress awareness, stress reduction in a workshop format. We had 30 or so kids stay after school, part of Women's History Month, to watch on the basis of sex, a story of Ruth Bainer Ginsberg. Or Ruth Berner, at any rate, it was well-attended, but kids are given their time to stay after school till 5:00, 5:30 to learn a little bit and to be with each other watching the movie, which is pretty cool. Clubs were mentioned. Our club signups for the fourth marking period are Monday. And, you know, it's spring when we've been bottled up all winter with indoor clubs. We have 10 teachers have asked to do an outdoor club, which is nice. And it felt great yesterday and today to be outside. We have our last fun night or school dance, whatever you want to call it, tomorrow night. And so there's, we seeing things in their cycle coming to an end. This one is a St. Patrick's Day theme with March Madness thrown in and probably some dodgeball and dancing, and it should be a good time. And it's been really interesting this year to see the student council advisors and the student council kids come up with the ideas for how to make each dance just a little bit different than the one before. And this week was also is the culmination of our mid-spring or early spring concert season. We had a extravaganza last week. Monday, we had our orchestra concert. And on Saturday is, there's a choir concert, a chorus concert that's here at the, at the high school at 3:30, I believe, is the time for that one. So getting each of the ensembles a little stage time this week, which is pretty cool. So Mr. Rule?
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. As Mr. Rosen referenced, representatives from Evangelical Community Hospital, where I've also been at Windtown the last couple of weeks, working with many of our students to talk about healthy habits and also they could practice on some of the CPR mannequins. That was a lot of fun to watch the kids go down there. And, but I think the most important thing is that the kids are really learning important life lessons, not only about taking care of themselves, but how to help others and even warning signs when somebody may be in distress. So I thank you, thank you. It goes out to Mr. Lagerman for hosting our guests. And that's been a really, really valuable opportunity for our kids. On Tuesday, we celebrated Wacky Socks Day in recognition of World Down Syndrome Day. So a lot of students wore their fun and wacky socks to show their support. One of our teachers has a child with Down Syndrome, and he came in to talk to her class and actually went out to play with the kids. And right after fifth grade recess, the kids go down to the cafeteria for lunch, and they were all chanting his name because I guess he was making shot after shot after shot one-handed. So he was a celebrity for the day for sure. And I just thought it was really wonderful for our students to have the chance to interact and look at, look at, look at a person through their abilities and what they can offer to everybody and not just through their challenges. We're also doing some focusing over the next few weeks on online safety with our students. We do this throughout the year in different ways, but as we're getting through the school year, we're seeing more and more issues rise online in terms of texting back and forth and some online kinds of things that are happening. And so what we want to do is, as our school counselor goes in and holds class meetings, she's got a series of things that she's going to go over with students to talk about how to be safe online, how they don't share information with people online, and if somebody reaches out to them that they don't know, to absolutely not respond to that person online. And we've also shared some tips for parents and some resources for parents on our Facebook page. And finally, tomorrow, we have two very, very important activities. The Bloomsburg Theater Ensemble is coming for their performance in the morning for all grades, and the school pickleball championship happens tomorrow at 2:45. So we'll keep you updated through Facebook. Mr. Wetzel?
Thank you. This past Tuesday, Kelly, we also did the Crazy Sock Day. And speaking also as a parent of a fifth grader, when I talked to my daughter and asked her how the day was, that was all she spoke about was that teacher's son and just, it was just awesome. So it was such a cool thing to see, and she was, just would go on and on about it. And I think it was such a powerful thing for the kids to experience that, also for that teacher to be able to experience that with her child. So reached out to her and just thanked her for doing that. I think it's an awesome thing that we can continue to expand upon each year, just a great thing for our kids to experience. Also, this past Tuesday, we had first grade music curriculum night. And this was their first time to get on stage. They did in groups of two, and then at the end, they had a full-grade performance kindergarten. It's during the school day, and it's one or two classrooms at a time. So it's a much different experience when they get up there and it's, the gym is full of people. And it was just awesome. Like they're, they're so nervous walking in and excited, and they're dressed so nice. They get up on stage and they're doing like the heart symbols and waving to parents the whole time, just to see their excitement and energy and giving them that opportunity in front of a full gym is a great thing. So it was really cool to see them up there and all the songs that they performed for everyone. It was supposed to be tomorrow, but due to family sickness, we're bumping it to Monday. We have a guest artist. She's a mother of two of the children that we have at Kelly Elementary and also an art and art history professor at Bucknell. She's going to come in for our third grade students and do a full-grade presentation and just talk about art in her life and her process of creating art. And then she's doing workshops with each of the classes during the school day. And her pieces then will be at the Milton Art Bank and Milton Art Academy this spring. So our students will be going, third grade will be going there on a field trip to see her pieces on display. And then also just to break it up so they're not all in there at the same time. They will be doing a mural tour throughout Milton. They have several murals throughout the community. So Mrs. Jarrett, our art teachers, really spearheaded this with the parent. Just another awesome opportunity. And I think for our kids to see not just someone from our community come in, but also a parent of one of their peers, it's just an awesome thing to be able to take part in and then see her work on display at this gallery is a pretty cool thing. And then the final thing that I have is Mr. Campbell's been taking on the Kids Heart Challenge that he did co-sponsor with Mrs. Christini. So he's on his own this year, and he's taken the lead and doing awesome with it. The kids do this during gym class, and they get a form that they can get donations if they would like to. He doesn't push it too hard, but the kids really have gotten into it. The money goes to the American Heart Association. And this year, he set the goal, kind of thinking how it's gone in the past. It's been a couple of years since they've done it. And then we were already at triple the amount of the original goal. So he's super excited to tell Ms. Christini about how it's going this year. And the kids are pumped. They're having a great time. And he's had some family members reach out, especially from the one student that's one of the top donors so far, has collected the most, that she's done some bake sales to raise money, and it's, their family has had a history or it really touches them with that we're raising money for the American Heart Association because they've had some things in the past that, that impacted their family. So she's really passionate about it. So it's really cool just to see them get into it and run with it. So just a lot of good stuff going on.
Great. Fun stuff, John?
Absolutely. All righty, because everybody loves a budget update. So I'll share the screen here. All right. So yes, it's been a while since we've had an update, but just wanted to give you a quick summary of where we are right now in the budget, as you recall. This was our original budget with a small remainder, positive remainder as of November, first time in a long time, and we've been able to keep that positive remainder going. So since we last talked in January, we have done our due diligence, negotiating for our healthcare increase, going out to the marketplace, and we've been able to lock in a 4% increase. Again, I had budgeted 12% previously, just in case, but I think we've done pretty well, especially in this inflationary environment, to lock in 4%, along with a multi-year contract with some additional cap. So we'll be asking you to vote on that later in this meeting, but I think that's a positive step. We've been making minor updates to our personnel benefits. We've had an update to our assessed value. As many of you know, the beloved country cupboard has come down, and with it are assessed values as well. So we've had a slight hit there. We've done some adjusting to some additional teaching positions that I know Mrs. Moser has talked about. And we are down below our Act One tax increase limit. The limit is 4.7%. So let's get into those numbers. As you can see here, the update to assessed values, we took a hit of about $77,000. No teachers elected to take a sabbatical this year, so there were some savings there. We have a little bit more from the additional staffing positions that Mrs. Moser mentioned. That health insurance increase/decrease saved us over $300,000 there. And right now, keeping an even budget with revenues matching expenses, our tax increase is down to 3.6%, down from 4.7. And again, there's still, there's still some room to maneuver. So next up in April is our health insurance open enrollment, when folks can make changes to their health insurance plan. Right now, the Act 93 agreement, and I forgot to put on here, the asking contract, are currently under negotiation. So we have some placeholders in there for now, but the final numbers will be coming. In May, our support staff retirements are due. And then at the last meeting in April, I'll be asking you to vote on the proposed final budget at the meeting. That's at least 30 days before our final, final budget, which I will ask you to vote on in June. So between now and then, still plenty of changes. But on a positive note, we are at a balanced budget below the Act One. So that's where we are with that. Are there any questions?
Next up, we have our first board act. This is the quote to design rules and construction management of the associates. If you want to just give them more information?
Yes, absolutely. So as you know, we have been talking about the dragon's den or concession stand that would be built out here on the high school property between the turf field and the baseball field to serve both locations. We've been talking about it for a while, and we've been looking at taking some concrete steps towards that. As part of our planning and analysis, we reached out to EI Associates. They've actually been very helpful with us in terms of value engineering for this building design, helping us find ways to build it more efficiently, you know, remove any unnecessary costs and get it within a workable range. So we reached out to them. I was given the name of another architecture firm. I reached out to some of my colleagues. EI was one suggestion. There was another one. Unfortunately, I didn't hear back from them. EI has been very helpful. And I asked them for a proposal for A to Z Suits and Nuts, you know, from design all the way through to engineering, to bidding, to construction management, to closeout. And this is their proposal. The proposed cost is $70,000, which is approximately 10% of the estimated value of the building that would be built. And that's pretty standard nowadays. It's the, the architecture and engineering and construction management services tend to run about that. So that's why we're working with our folks at EI Associates. And that's why we're bringing this to you this evening. We looked at it last meeting. And so we would ask you to vote on it this evening so we can move ahead with the design and planning for the dragon's den.
I just want to make sure it's clear that we went to more than one company. One company returned a bid, and that bid is not just for actually planning the facility, but they will be managing the entire building process.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that people understand that, because I think there's been some confusion around.
Absolutely. It involves engineering and going and all the plans and going out to bid and getting those bids and analyzing the bids, making sure we get the best value, and then superintending the bill from shoveling the ground to whoever's got anything. So, yep, absolutely. No, Mrs. Young is excused this evening, so I will be covering for her. So thank you in advance for your patience and your grace.
I thought she was at the end there.
Yep, just maybe.
Nope. You're stuck with the D team.
So let's not forget Jordan. Want to go around? So if you want to take the lead with the recorder, you have your.
Absolutely. So Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enscher Fossero? Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fencer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Krebs?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So then we have a couple of pieces of new business. And so, John, if you want to tell us about our health insurance?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned, our contract with Capital Blue Cross was up this year, and so we went out into the marketplace and we talked with our friends, not only at Capital Blue Cross, but also at Gexinger Health Plan and Highmark as well. And Capital Blue Cross came back with the best deal for a long-term contract. We're looking at a 4% increase this year, and then it's a three-year deal, and the two out years are capped at 8%. And I will tell you, in the past years, when we've had caps, Capital Blue Cross has been able to keep them well below the cap. But it's always good to have a cap just in case you have a run rate that, that goes pretty fine. So I would recommend that we approve this three-year contract with Capital Blue Cross this evening. Okay. Dr. Enscher Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fencer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Krebs?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries.
The next item is for the technicalities, which is, John, do you want to speak to us or?
I mean, I was here to answer questions. Basically, I can still belt. It's no problem. So at my last presentation, I had mentioned about, that was what, two weeks ago, the last meeting? Mentioned about some of the challenges that we are having. I'll get here in a moment. And one of those action items that we look at is replacing our network infrastructure with something more suited for the size of the organization we have. And so this is that proposal to get started with that. So basically, it's just the gear and the enabling to put it all together.
Oh, sorry. Is the stairs okay?
It's up with the stairs.
Or is it straight?
The line.
It's the line.
But we have a second.
We do.
Okay. So I think my only question would be, can you give us, although you hear last time, a sense of future costs and where this gets us to? Like, what's our five resolution, 10 resolution, what's our?
Seven to 10.
Okay. Where does this lead until that? Or is it?
It's across all, all of our buildings.
So this is where like multiple buildings?
Yes, this is, yeah, this is your line.
And this will help with, I know recently we've had a lot of issues with things just not working. And well, Winston High School will not have the internet, and this will help with that problem. Excellent.
Okay. Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fencer?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Krebs?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enscher Fossero?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Our excitement to bring girls volleyball again as a new sport coming into the high school next year where our student body necessitates that we work with our collective bargaining association, the L A B A P S A N B A organization, because it will come in under our new collective bargaining agreement. It meant that the addition of the sport to the total sports program and it was the, and that we needed to enter into a M O A of understanding to create the sport and the coach for the sport within the collective bargaining agreement. So the M O A is what's working here for us.
Any more questions? We've got to over zero second by. Any questions or discussions?
Mr. Fencer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Krebs?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enscher Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Sure. My comment about the policies, again, as things come forward to us through the state, then we in turn need to obviously either revise or place into policy some of what you see here. What's really come forward is, is expanded opportunities for homeschool students to participate fully in our curricular programming. While homeschool students have always been welcome in the Lisberg district to come in, we've afforded courses, we've shared curricular materials, we've had students participate in our extracurricular sports and our co-curricular music programs. Here are some continued extensions of their opportunities that now will be available to them. So they are revisions to some of our existing policies. But I will also tell you, many of these are things that we've already been doing for homeschool students as they choose and their families choose programming with us. There are some additional ones that continue to reflect the language of making sure that any student and their family caught by the economic circumstances drawn on through post-pandemic in our world, that their ability to enroll in school, take courses, and move through the pieces that need to happen should not be in any way hindered by that economic opportunity. should not be in any way hindered by that economic, uh, opportunity or lack thereof. So some of these are language reflections for that as well. And finally, we had, um, the need to have a policy that likely should be in place for just simply the communal, um, diligence. So you'll see our front policy here, uh, is now in place. And, um, I will tell you that you'll see that most local school districts have gone this way. We were all, uh, given, uh, wonderful funding, professor funding. And now there is the absolute concern that it has to have been spent appropriately and accounted for appropriately. So you see the broad range of policies.
Any questions? I don't know. I guess I can mention this house. And these are the first three days.
Yes.
So we can do this. No, no.
I think we probably will call.
Yeah, we'll call.
Yeah.
Typically, we'll call.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Krebs.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yes.
Dr. Ensikur Fossero.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Fencer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, you were second right after Mr. Heath. Yes.
So unfortunately, there are two documents here on something, and I mean, we all have different, uh, items. So we're moving on. So the next item now, under information, um, not for action tonight, but just information in summer painting projects. So, John, if you want to take us through that quote.
Absolutely. Um, so, uh, Mrs. Moser, uh, Mr. Gallegos, uh, and hi. We met with the folks from Gordian. Um, and we went around and looked at our three of our older buildings and said, how can we spruce this up? Because it's been probably 30 years that, um, since, uh, most of those buildings have been thoroughly painted. I mean, they've been touched up here and there. Um, but they're definitely in need of fresh good paint. So, um, it is a substantial work. Um, we've narrowed it down, uh, to primarily Kelly and Lindtown, uh, will be the focus this year. And so you see the quotes there to go around and pretty much paint every vertical surface that, uh, that requires it, including patching and sanding and all the other good things, um, that would be done over the summer. As we normally do our clean. So we would coordinate, you know, rooms and our custodians and the painting and, and all that. So, um, and, uh, to answer a question that Mrs. Moser asked me, yes, there is money in our capital projects account to make this happen. So we can definitely, uh, spruce up our buildings this summer. And, uh, we can also look at perhaps next summer, uh, working on the middle school as well. I don't know, Mrs. Moser, if you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, again, just it's information tonight because we've been receiving the size of quote. And, um, yeah. It's, it's a much needed look to add, you know, effort to try to, uh, maintain the good buildings we have. Um, and I've got some comments to that later in my report this evening. Uh, but that's why we have it tonight for information. So anything?
I don't have anything else.
Do you have anything else on the question?
There is a, the whole school included is not just stuff that's like kind of like.
That, that's the math room. That's, that's the math room. That's being added. Yeah. Yeah. No problem.
Okay, so the board president was for that. I don't have any emerging public announcement items. And I do want to use Mrs. Moser, uh, a bit of time to go through the, I think, the calls of her. And go to super.
Thank you. I mentioned in our last meeting, the calendar was March and we were heading toward the last three months of our academic year. School years can be measured in multiple ways. We have a nine-month school calendar. We have 180 days of instruction. We have 12-month fiscal calendar. Stay with me. We have a five-day week, but we operate on a six-day rotation for some of our classes. We have blocks and spinners and cycles and periods and specials and variations of the daily schedule. In order to make all things fit, we find many ways to make things work. And I have always both marvel and taken great pride in the collective mentality of school leadership, professional educators, school staff, and a trusting as well as supportive community of parents and stakeholders to plan and collaborate and work together, making our school district both strong and effective. And the professional pleasure today to take part in four team meetings at the middle school. And I witnessed firsthand the solid focused work of teachers working together to address student needs, the academic rigor and pacing and effective school planning for the close of the quarter, the needs for the fourth quarter and the successful completion of our current school year. And we heard our principals speak to that same effect tonight. In those same meetings, I was there to talk about the coming school year and the important planning pieces that have to be examined now in order to be best prepared for 23, 24. Their expertise, professionalism and level of commitment to the challenge was amazing. And their student-centered focus very clearly evident, a compliment to George and the conduct of the teachers today. And it was truly a wonderful opportunity for me to participate with them in that effort. These past two weeks have been filled with lots of additional discussions and planning. Elementary P S A meeting was about closing out a business year and also electing new officers to begin their preparation for the coming year. A recent meeting of the foundation focused on current projects, but also wanting to get the ideas moving for new efforts and moving forward. Our school leadership team meetings work with current initiatives as well as planning priorities for summer work, as you heard, and the coming school year's programs as well. And it all goes on at the same time. In our forward focus, there are several large initiatives that at this point are in a discussion phase. We are examining the grade alignment in our elementary structure. We have a two-grade capacity building and a four-grade capacity building in Lindtown and Kelly respectively. In early January, I began to talk with people about the best configuration for instructional programming, early literacy, supports and interventions for students and special education programming. We've been talking, we've been considering, we need to move that study to conclusion here in short order. The connection of configuration of grade levels is connected to the next piece, addressing our playgrounds at both buildings. We have played well over recent years. And some pieces are in disrepair. And at both playgrounds, we lack inclusionary access for all students to be able to enjoy. And so we need to think and we need to plan and we need to be looking at that important piece of what our school programming is as well. And then the third piece under review, as you just heard a moment ago, the interior conditions of our two elementary buildings, specifically painting and restroom repairs. We've accomplished projects to purify our air, place HVAC systems in place, examine the obstruction, the structural integrity of our buildings and implement important roof repairs. We want to continue to work diligently to maintain our current good facilities for our most important daily work, the teaching and learning that goes on every day. So many of these things are in talk and look and consideration. And they all are somewhat interconnected. And that's the business that we're currently involved in right now.
All right, does anyone want to give their word, please, on a community report?
Uh, the CSI you met last Wednesday, they did a special report on their special education programs, which was a great effort that everybody's seen. Um, sometimes we should, we should play some of those here in a, in a meeting so people can see them. Because the, the services that are offered, I keep saying this over and over again, but like every time I go and that too. So just so many incredible supports, um, that are happening and also just their success. I think that they do, um, it's such an incredible support, not just for our districts, but for our area. Um, last week, the week before, Mrs. Reber was the, um, suicide prevention event at the campus theater that the IU, um, sponsored. And I know when Reber was there, which is why I said her name. Um, and I would like to have been there, couldn't be there because of work. But I said, I heard it was really well attended, about 170 people. And they have parfaits screening, a movie, lots of discussion groups, area leaders. Um, because this, uh, it's a really important issue that we all can't care about enough. So I'm glad that we were there. There was actually a team from the, the district that was there. So, uh, and also, um, every time we meet, um, the alumni association is meeting. I'm newly on that horn, so I've actually scheduled a meeting, um, with the brass and the Charlie, sort of get caught up to speed with that match. Sometimes we're embarrassed.
Uh, Sun Tech met, uh, you have the J O C highlights, uh, in board docs. Uh, one quick note, I'll just mention, uh, the Midwest Board, uh, the Midwest School Board, uh, just had a work session at Sun Tech, uh, to incorporate a tour of the campus and also, uh, do their monthly work session there. Uh, definitely an interesting concept to have, you know, a meeting over there. I know there's several board members that are newer to our board that have not been over and some board members that have not been over in quite a while. So I definitely recommend, um, whether it's a whole group or just, uh, one or two of us, uh, you know, we can always set up a tour. Uh, Mr. Bakker, I'm not sure how many of you guys have gotten to know him or have gotten a chance to meet him. Uh, he's doing a wonderful job over there and I know he would love to show off the building. So, uh, just a little plug, uh, for any board member who has not been over in a while, uh, feel free to reach out and we can set up a, a tour of the building.
Thank you, Jordan. Never mind, see, we talked about the potential of a meeting there and we advertised essentially one month in advance. And so, John, you have to tell me, like, in the next, in the first possible day, could you be, if you have the ability, we consider you out there.
Yeah, you'd probably be looking at your first meeting in May then would be the soonest.
That's plausible, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think as long as we advertise it well enough in advance, absolutely, it could be done.
Yeah, is that the thing for the?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, but I'm not sure the logistics for how to make that happen, but.
Jordan, are they doing the fish fry again, or importantly?
Uh, we actually, there's been no discussion of that. And I, I'm not a seafood person, so I did not ask.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is our. President. So we were, um, the Fossero, second, second by Mrs. Krebs. Any questions, especially on the idea that I don't?
Uh, Dr. Jablonski.
Yes, except for the minutes.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Krebs.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Stanton.
Yes, except for the minutes.
Okay, Dr. Ensikur Fossero.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman.
Yes, except for the minutes.
All right, Mr. Fencer.
Yes.
And Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have houses and comments of what I'm not in the writing. So here you.
Yes, if you would come to the podium, so Mr. Fencer and the folks on line, if you can, I can't hear you.
Okay. Um, thanks. Um, here primarily for one thing, but I'll take the opportunity to first mention an unrelated, um, thought of mine. At the end of last meeting, um, left the, the, I think it was the director comments, at the end of last meeting, talking to the core director Lyons, um, and talking about the academic spotlight. He mentioned that he wished there were more people that could, uh, come to, you know, to be informed. And I totally concur, but also, um, I had hoped to be here. Instead, I was there on Zoom, watch, uh, uh, and learn from Mr. Derek and his father. Thought it was fantastic. Um, any recorded, um, meeting that is available and in addition through the website, getting the slide apps, uh, which, which are great to like, you know, I, in the past, uh, academic spotlights have poured around with other parent friends. So there, there, there might be more people that are aware and, and get, you know, to benefit from our, in my process. Um, and, and it was fantastic. And being into my, my current fifth grader, who fortunately has Mr. Derek, he considered me sitting in last week's meeting and he mentioned, uh, yes, exactly. Um, I still love it. Um, me and my girlfriend here for a Philly unrelated reason, and that is, um, which was just sort of addressed, um, the potential for maybe a switch of fourth and fifth to, uh, second through fifth to, uh, Kelly. And then here through first, that's my understanding, uh, to the, to Lindtown. Um, so, uh, it's been disappointing, uh, to sort of learn about it in the way we have in a departure from what had come to, um, you know, this very excellent communication from the administration on at least like major school things, or at least knowing how to find information, you know, through, um, school board, redundancy, agenda items, you know, um, like the policies that were discussed, uh, first reading, second reading. Um, this, this time things seem to be, you know, rolling out quite differently. Um, so it was last week when my daughter in the third grade came home and mentioned that she wouldn't be going to Lindtown next year, that she would be staying in Kelly though. And, and that was too disappointing because she would like to, you know, get to go to Lindtown just like her fifth grade brother does. Um, so it seems to be imperative, I mean, parents guardians are not talking. There seems to be just a lot of confusion. Um, and in the void of getting group communication, there's been, you know, some speculation, disagreement, general lack of understanding. Some parents are considering to know, let me say this is definitely happening. Um, you know, it's sort of a, a damn deal. And I'm more on the other side where, you know, I am familiar with a certain formal process that, you know, where it will come up as an agenda item and there'll be a chance for discussion. Um, there'd be the recommendations of the board, ultimately a vote. Um, but in, in, in that, you know, a chance to learn, you know, how policy A O two for school utilization would change and learn how such a change meets the three criteria, you know, benefit the, um, best interest of the students, wise of such resources, um, and accomplishing, you know, the goals of the school board. I really look forward to hearing that so that, you know, in terms of potential support from, you know, wife and I and the general community, you know, we can weigh the advantages, you know, which I think we'll learn about with the, you know, what we feel are disadvantages. Um, and so on that, you know, this is where I can just talk personally about my kids. Um, Conrad, he's my son, he's in fifth grade, he's wrapping up, you know, what have been just wonderful two years of. Just absolutely, you know, just amazing time, you know, to be in this, you know, the more intimate, uh, building with fellow fourth and fifth graders. Now, the, the, the first thing that has been great, probably the most important thing, have been his teachers. And I know that that's a constant, so no matter what happens, that will be changing. Um, but, you know, it would be unfortunate if our daughter, um, doesn't get the benefit of some of the things he has. I'll just, I'll just think two things. Um, besides the, you know, expected gradual transition, a fourth grader would show in terms of maturity and everything. Last year it seemed to be like a step, like very early on in the year, he just seemed more grown up. And, and it seemed that the chance for more responsibility and independence that comes with the geographical location of the, of the building, you know, we live a mile and a half or so. It takes, it's two kilometers to get to the school. So, you know, he, um, we felt comfortable with him riding the bike. And I know others, others have kids that, you know, walk to school. Um, and, and, and that was just a chance for him to grow up. Um, and, you know, for, for, for their, you know, trust, independence, he had more responsibility. And I'm, I'm just not sure if the same fraction of students that currently benefit from that um, will, will, will be the same with, with this change. I'm not really sure. Again. I'm not really sure. Again, you know, hope to learn about that. And then the other thing is, we see the benefit of fourth and fifth grade being in such close geographical proximity to the middle school as a way to ease the transition, you know, a big transition to middle school. There's going to be some things that are very new, but he's very familiar with the area. And I think that's going to bring some level of comfort for him. And I, I just think that could be a loss as well. So again, look forward to hearing more. Hopefully the public can learn about this. Hopefully, you know, there can be transparency, good communication, which we traditionally have. And, you know, and ultimately, you know, I'm, I'm like, you know, everything that I see as maybe a downside, you know, maybe we can hear from teachers where they say, can you think Conrad had a great time? You know, explaining fourth and fifth grade at Lindtown, wait until we, wait till you see what we can do, you know, with, with, with fourth and fifth graders at Kelly. I, I don't, I wouldn't get that.
As you know from your experience, if you get a comment that for me, you don't really respond, but it, I'm sorry, but it does create images for us to address things more. Anyone else have comments to go on or do you still have?
You do not have any comments online.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we need to direct comments that start with missing one.
I've always, it's great to hear from all the principals, what's going on here. I do really think at the middle school, I love the movies at our school that they've been giving. I think, me thinking is this is the second month in a row, because I know last month they did the Black History Month, they watched Selma. And I think it does give such an opportunity for the students to choose to do that. Like, I mean, that's not because they're going on their own, it's not a mandatory thing. But for them to see that, I think that's really great. I know my son really liked it and he said there's been quite a few people wanting to. I think that's also great to have kids that are going to see movies that are so historical and really give such impact. So I just really think that that's fantastic and such a great thing that's happening. And I'm always in touch with the clubs that are there and the ideas that the teachers have. They're so, they're so broad and beyond kind of what I would think as a club. And I know I was there the one day bringing a pet in and just seeing all of the kids out of the hallways and the different things. And some of them, I was like, I have no idea what that club is, but everybody looks like they're having a great time. So I do think that's just really fantastic again, what the teachers are doing and, and going out of their way to really have that experience. And it will be great for the people to be outside more, hopefully the people that are going. They have a band, so I was there for a middle schooler, but I think that also was such a fantastic opportunity to see. And I know the music teacher is really focused on, and it's true for parents to see the progression of, you know, that, why did I even let my kid get an instrument? Because it's terrible to see seniors in high school that are so fantastic. So to see that, because sometimes we do go to the musicals or we see the band play at the football games and we see this amazing thing and we kind of forget they all are very screechy and not making sound. So I think that is so cool. And to see the marching band come in, which I think was a really neat thing to see, especially this time of year. We're kind of used to like marching band being done, at least if we're not part of the marching band. So I think that was really neat and something for the music teachers to put on. I think that was just such a, such a cool thing to experience. Yeah, I don't have really anything else. I mean, I just love hearing kind of what's on on in schools.
I'm going to go to Mr. Fetter next, because I know Ms. Stanton, who likes that little recruiting game first.
I would.
So I would just say, it's been a while since I've sat on Zoom, normally I'm in the room. So just to provide some feedback, it's a little difficult to hear the board members. So the board members, I would just remind you guys to pull the microphones a little closer to you. I hear the administrators really well, which is good, but it's difficult for all my fellow Zoomers tonight. It's difficult to hear the board members talk. And so, yeah, I have the speaker up all the way and it's still a little difficult, at least for me. So just a little plug again, as we move forward and continue to Zoom, I would definitely encourage everybody to speak a little louder or pull the mic a little closer. Thanks for allowing me to join via Zoom tonight. I'm in Florida for work. It was eighty seven sunny today, so don't be jealous, but it was beautiful weather and it's great to hear all the updates and get everything still a little bit from a distance, but still receive those updates. So thanks.
So you're saying you have sand in your ear, Jordan?
Unfortunately, I'm in, in the center of the state, so no, no sand, but just a lot of sun, so.
How nice. So I also had a child who screeched in some town. So allow me to say, absolutely, there was noise, they were making noise. My neighbor actually got to the making music stage, really. But I, I actually, all the things that you all brought up and, and Lyons is always so good at covering things as well. But I just want to thank what a list of partners, community partners we have, how fortunate we are. From Bee Man Delical to Bloomsburg Theater Ensemble, to Milton Art Bank, to the Milton Downtown Experience, to Bucknell, an art professor, to, who I believe is Anna Cal, is that correct?
Yeah.
And, you know, having the online safety courses. I'm just, and of course, the Green Dragon Foundation. We are so fortunate to have such a wealth of community partnerships and partners who, and parents who want to, to help, right? The Heart Association. So really grateful for that and happy to be a member of this community.
By the first, I wasn't at Laskin, so I did not have a chance to say in time with action how much I enjoyed musical. This is the time of the year that I haven't had any number of working musicals, did quite some motion. It was just so rare to see.
Bless you.
You know, again, your, your, with, with this community, people pull on, which is so much. Fantastic to see that. I also have a, I always read a long poem from, and I wanted to just, I think I might accept this one. They're saying again, I hear from my home children who go to college, how beneficial it is to them to have had the long classes that they have in Eastwood here and how their classmates at the college level struggle with how long classes are and they have a difficult time paying attention and for their learning, but when they get to college, the suggestion to have a longer class period. And our kids do not even get that adjustment. There's a lot of adjustments they do have to make, right? That everybody has to be. But we're just giving them, we're doing a great service by them. That's definitely something to mention that. And I also just want to thank Mr. Jay, he's very useful.
I don't have a lot to add. I appreciate the rundown of all the awesomeness that came out of winter sports. Just the recap from pretty much every winter sport. It's something I may have in postseason, so perhaps towards athletes and coaches. I know my kids are ready for spring because it teases in the light today, so it's kind of frustrating. But get out and catch some of those spring sports. There's a lot already going on, already competing. And I think the, the parents appreciate the support and the kids do too. And support possession stands, so we can be supporting in other ways too. And I'm excited about moving forward with possession stands for this location in the night terms. I was like referring to that area, I did, and we try to plan pretty after visits so that we're not. But I do appreciate all the input. There are much as luck now because we're going to interview guys every other week live. And I love all the stuff going on, schools right on the shore. And see various of the traditions that are still being carried on. And this Christine James talk in my role, like five times this week, so shout out to Mrs. Lee. So she's still carrying on the national town here.
I just wanted to say congratulations to all the new inductees of the National Amish Society. That's wonderful and always super exciting for those students. Thank you for the online safety, anything with online safety, anything as a parent, like we are all doing the best we can, but there is a lot of things that I don't know that they know. So all hands on deck is the best way to go with that. And also thank you for figuring out this network text. I know it's been a hassle for teachers, it's been a hassle for students. We can have all the pretty things we want, but if they don't work the way they're supposed to, it doesn't really matter.
I absolutely agree with you. So I also want to thank Mr. Jay for, and speaking to us about the topic that you spoke on. It was interesting to me, we, we sort of heard anecdotally, just very recently, that there's a lot of discussion and conversations and things going on somewhere and you hear over social media or whatever. And oddly enough, we learned that Mrs. Moser, who is actually our expert on the subject, has had, until Mr. Jay just spoke, no one spoke to her about this topic. So I wanted to encourage people that maybe have questions, concerns, those kinds of issues. You know, various board members, we all have backgrounds and frequently somebody has some expertise from their personal or professional life that can, that can speak to something that the board is dealing with. I'm not ashamed to tell you that I have little or no experience in the early childhood needs or the children's needs of kids of that age. Fortunately for me and everybody else, we employ someone who is an expert in that area and has built a career doing that stuff and everything is possible. So anybody that has those questions, I'm sure if you want to send an email or do a voicemail, she would be very happy to address specific questions or concerns. I know for a fact that she can address all three of those things that you referenced in the call. So I, I encourage people that have those concerns or have questions or, or have, you know, what they feel or strong arguments in one way or another, please, please let her know. You can certainly reach out to a board member as well. And, and I know that that has happened to some extent, but I don't think any of us have the expertise as Moser does, thanks to the reasons why this would be considered and the efforts that are ongoing, discussions that are happening. So she would be the best person to ask. We can certainly attempt to answer this one. And, and I, and I would say that that author is not only remembered publicly, but perhaps staff that maybe have those concerns and the one reason or another have felt comfortable raising those issues when the opportunity can present. So that's what I'll say about that.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone, because you pretty much checked all the boxes. But I have nothing left to speak of, except I was very fortunate the other morning that we were able to have a safe opening meeting. Not everyone could attend and we do know we need to, you know, cast a wider net to make sure that everyone can be included regarding the standing, so that we know, you know, what we can do, what people would like to do. And you this right, because we're, we're, as we do tonight, we're doing this, and I need to be defined properly. And the other thing is so kind to have, we're going to stake out, pre-stakeout the area and put the sign right up. It's called well intentioned and no exceptions. The site will be well marked and playful with the, you know, park. And we can get our, this is, this is just a very great shared business. It's a concern, we're very far away from having to share with this. It's a concern, you're very far from a functional bathroom. And then the mobile by the wind. And it seems like a small thing that can be. So in fact.
Aye.